Need a motion to return to open session.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're now back in closed session. Need a motion to certify a closed session at the only items discussed in closed session were those that were in the enabling motion and those in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Auburn?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Auburn?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ack?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey? Yeah. Mr. Jeff?
Yes. Excuse me.
Next item on our agenda is public address. This is where the board sits aside thirty minutes with a maximum of three minutes per citizen to address the board on items of educational interest. At this time, we have no one signed up in advance, so with that, I will open it up to the audience, and if there's anyone who would like to address this board at this time, if you will please step forward and state your name and address.
Alright. Good evening Chairman Jones, members of the board, Ms. Blackburn. I am Kelly Pleasant. I'm president of Montgomery County Education Association, and I reside at twenty-seven thirty-seven Old Fort Road in Blacksburg. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. The MCEA and VEA believe that all persons should be guaranteed equal opportunity within the public education system. The association opposes discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, religious beliefs, residence, disability, physical appearance, political activities, professional association activities, age, marital status, family relationship, gender, or sexual orientation or gender identification, or any other kind. Montgomery County Public Schools has implemented an active diversity program to raise awareness, to nurture understanding, and most recently, to move from tolerance to acceptance of the differences among us, of both our employees and our students. This has been important work as we continue to ensure all members of the school system feel safe to learn and work in a protected environment. On February twelfth, Montgomery County Supervisor Matt Gabriel introduced a resolution to send to Richmond in support of Senate Bill seven oh one. That bill called for protection from workplace discrimination of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender state employees. The Board of Supervisors voted unanimously that night, seven to zero, to approve the resolution. Mr. Gabriel was proud of the board for taking such an active stand, as was the MCEA. The current equal opportunity statement of Montgomery County Public Schools reads, "Montgomery Public Schools does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, disability, or age in its programs and activities." The sexual harassment statement currently reads, "The Montgomery County School Board is committed to maintaining a learning-working environment free from sexual harassment and harassment based on age, race, national origin, disability, or religion. Therefore, the school board prohibits such harassment of any student or school personnel at school or any school-sponsored activity." The MCEA respectfully asks that as you consider during your upcoming retreat or ongoing discussions about school board policy, adding more inclusive language regarding sexual orientation and identification to these statements to reflect the county's strong policy regarding respect, diversity, and anti-bullying among employees and students. Thank you again for all you do for the students and employees of Montgomery County Public Schools, and I hope you all have a wonderful summer.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time? If so, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, public address is now closed. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is consent items. And we have several items here under consent. You have field trips. I mentioned the one field trip that's been added at the later this afternoon related to the trip, international trip. And you've got a couple of grant proposals there as well. Do I need to pull anything and discuss? Hearing none. Items are now approved on consent. Next item on our agenda is the personnel report. I need a motion to approve the personnel report.
So moved.
Any discussion on the personnel report? Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Personnel report is approved. Next item on the agenda is the payment of the bills. Need a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Any discussion on the bills? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills have been paid. Next item on the agenda is superintents, reports, recommendations, and announcements. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. The first item on your agenda this evening is a grant proposal, MCPS Project Graduation Two Thousand Thirteen Summer Academy. This is a recurring project graduation, which is a statewide initiative which provides opportunities for students to earn verified credits that they need for graduation. We have applied for this project in the past and have applied again this year. It gives sessions in English reading, English writing, algebra, geometry, and other core subjects as student needs dictate. The participating students will be offered a minimum of twenty hours of instruction in each subject area in which they participate. I'm recommending this program tonight for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Glad we're doing it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is a presentation from our school food services coordinator, Mr. Michael Marsonelli. And a couple of months ago now, I think it is, Ms. Franklin suggested that it was a good time for the school board to have a presentation from food services because it's been a hot topic in the news and elsewhere, and the timing is especially relevant in light of some of the mandatory changes that have impacted the kinds of foods that we're serving, and also our student participation in the food services program. So tonight, Michael, will provide you with some information, a chance to sample some of the current food service offerings which you have in front of you, and give you an opportunity to ask questions that you may have. Michael?
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening, and thank you, Ms. Franklin, for bringing that up. I always appreciate the opportunity to present to the board. Mr. Chairman Jones and Ms. Superintendent Blackburn, thank you for having me today. What I've come to give you a brief, just a brief, hit the high spots of the changes that have occurred over the course of this past year, beginning with the beginning of the first day of school this year. The new regulations for the school lunch program changed a lot of things. One thing to begin with, they limited the calorie content by grades for students. So we have K through five, six through eight, and in your packet, in your cup, is the same information that I'm going to provide you. K through five, they've limited the calories, six through eight, and nine through twelve. What used to be the regulation was one-third of the RDA of twenty-five hundred calories, and that was for all students, K through twelve. What we've learned over the years is that we were feeding little kids like football players. And of course, the certain evidence of childhood obesity, school lunch, the school lunch programs are a great place to start to try to teach children, provide them healthy foods, and to try to teach them to select healthy foods while they're at school, and hopefully, once they get home. So there were calorie limits placed. Also, there were fruits and vegetables. The fruit and vegetable component of the school lunch used to be combined, fruit and vegetable, and they only had to select three items. They could even not even select a fruit or a vegetable if they so wished. What the new requirements are, they separated fruits and vegetables into two separate groups, and they also are requiring all students to take fruit and vegetable when they get a reimbursable lunch. In addition to taking vegetables, they made the job a little difficult for us. We've never shied from a challenge, but the regulations to provide a dark green vegetable, a red and orange vegetable, beans and peas, starchy vegetables, and other vegetables in over the course of a week. They also determined and told us that we had to serve them a certain number of times a week. So we know the kids all like green beans. We can't serve green beans every day.
Yeah.
And in fact, they're not even calling that a dark green. So the dark greens are your leafy vegetables. So one of the samples you have in front of you today is in a little souffle cup. It is tabbouleh. I just made it right before I got here. That's why, I'm not sweating because I'm nervous. I'm sweating because I was in a hot kitchen, and then putting on my Sunday go-to-church meeting clothes, so I could be at least presentable here. What you have is tabbouleh. That is a protein choice. We're also providing different types of protein to the students, trying to broaden their horizons. What tabbouleh is, is bulgur. And the recipe calls for one cup of bulgur. In there is one-third of a cup of olive oil, a third of a cup of lemon juice, fresh chopped mint, fresh diced cucumber, fresh chopped tomatoes, and some onion. That's all that's in there. And we did a food tasting test at Bellevue Elementary, and we did it over the course of three days to see how well it would go. The first time, not telling them anything about it, just putting it out there, see who took it. The second day, teaching them a little bit about it, and offering it again, see how many took it. And then on a third day, and this is over the course of two weeks, putting it out, and again, not saying anything, and see how well it went. Well, the little kids at Bellevue Elementary took it all. Now, we didn't make a whole lot, but all that we made went. And we tried to make sure that the teachers weren't the ones that all took it. In addition to the changes in requiring us to provide fruits and vegetables, and requiring the children to take a fruit and vegetable, we're also required to reduce the amount of protein and carbohydrate. Now USDA has backed off from that regulation after the start of the year because they really didn't realize how difficult it was to generate a menu over the course of the week with those restrictions that they provided. So they backed off. However, Montgomery County has not. We have continued going forward with the regulations as initially, as initially, we understood them, and they will be put back into place. So we figure, why go back? If we're there, we know that it takes twelve years. Our kindergartners in twelve years from now will not have known anything different, other than the products you're tasting today. What you're tasting is a commodity chicken product. It is whole chickens that we send off to Tyson to turn back into chicken breasts. It is covered with whole grain breading. There is no trans fats, and very, very little fat at all in that product. All of the carbohydrates that you have in front of you today are the only types of carbohydrates that we offer. All of our breads are fifty-one percent or greater whole grain, not just whole wheat, whole grain, which means it has to have the germ included. So the muffins that we offer for breakfast, whole grain. We have pancakes, blueberry pancakes, and regular syrup, maple syrup pancakes, all whole grain. The biscuit that you have in front of you is a whole grain biscuit. We've had manufacturers have had a bit of trouble trying to develop and get up to speed with us because they're trying to make the products that we need for schools. They're doing a pretty good job. That biscuit, I think, is a fairly tasty, fluffy, whole grain biscuit for, and whole grain gives products a much different flavor profile, often more dry. That was one of the problems that the manufacturers, Pillsbury and others, have had with coming up with a whole grain biscuit that we can offer in the breakfast program. What else have I, what else have I given you? Oh, another thing is a cheese stick. Now, you have to forgive me, these aren't coming out of the oven and they're not still crispy. I had to put them in a warming box to bring them over here. But that is low sodium, low fat, no trans fat, mozzarella cheese, and whole grain breading on the outside.
Wow.
Again, sometimes we have to try to fake kids out. We don't, we don't, we don't, it's hard for us to know when to stop telling them about what they're eating. Because what happens is they are presented with something that they've never had at home, and then the first thing they would do is not eat at all, especially the little kids. So we want them to ask for these items while they're coming through the serving line. Our milk, we are only permitted to, and we've been doing this here in Montgomery County for a number of years, but the only fluid milk product that we offer with our lunches is fat-free or one percent. Now, the one percent, we are required to provide two flavors. So we are keeping in our one percent is just the unflavored white one percent milk, but in our fat-free flavors, we are offering, depending upon the school, a chocolate, a strawberry, or a vanilla. So we are meeting the USDA guidelines by providing options in flavor profiles. They also know that the sugar, the caffeine that may be in the chocolate flavoring is so minuscule that it, the benefits of the vitamin A, vitamin D, calcium, and all the other good things in milk far outweigh the little bit of sugar and flavoring put in the milk, and they know the children will drink it. So we are continuing to provide that. I'm trying to move quickly. The new federal nutrition standards bring school meals in line with the dietary guidelines for Americans while providing students with the nutrition they need to succeed in school. They also are based on recommendations from the Institute of Medicine to increase consumption of fruits and vegetables while setting age-appropriate calorie ranges. Every school lunch offers students at minimum, milk, fruit, a vegetable, a grain, and a source of protein. And we encourage students to take all of these. And that's our goal, is to try to get them to take as many of those options as we can. We also, there's, we have a lot of information on our webpage. This is a newsletter we have, we provide, develop, and provide four times a year. Been working with dietetic interns. We have them in our schools, working through our department on a number of projects. We're doing nutrient analysis, which is available on our website. Menu writing, plate waste studies, the newsletter that you have in your hand, wellness, working with Dr. Goudreau, sports nutrition. We're gathering current sports nutrition guidelines for high schools, middle school athletes, planning to specifically focus on individual sport, starting with wrestling, football, and soccer. I could talk about school lunch all day, but I probably have already extended my, overextended my welcome. I would like to take any questions that you might have. There is one piece of information I failed to provide, Ms. Foster, Mr. Jones, Ms. Vaughn, and Ms. Woolsey, and that is a document that we have, and you all have available to you to look at what your children are eating in the schools. We are currently changing from a system, a program that provides thirty days of information, to one that you can now look at ninety days of what your children eat. We haven't been able to focus down to the exact item. It may say protein, it may say bottled water, it may say school lunch, it would say vegetable, but it may not say broccoli, or it may not say peas. But what I wanted to bring to you, because I ran them for each of you who have, all of you whom have children, who have children in the schools, just an example of the information that's available to all the parents just by going to our website, clicking on a button, signing up, doesn't cost them anything. Sorry for not bringing that to you today.
Board members, questions?
That's great. It sounds like it provides a lot of great tools for parents, so I appreciate that.
And how, the students have responded very positively from what you said.
They are. They're responding very positively. We had at the beginning of the year a slowdown, but then again, the first day of school, the first week and month of school, the kids bring the new lunch boxes.
Oh, yeah.
So we always compete with the lunch box, and that's a daily thing. But the, I think they were scared. The news has been so, so big on the topic of childhood obesity, and they're talking about the new, the new guidelines, and the requirement of having to take fruits and vegetables. I think that scared some of our children away. So we are down a little bit on our lunch counts, but we're seeing them come back now. And again, I think every year, as we continue to provide the fresh fruits and vegetables, we have five fruits and vegetables, or six fruits and vegetables every day. Always a can, always fresh. We have hot cooked vegetables, we have fresh vegetables. So we have a variety of foods. We have four or five entree choices. We have a peanut butter and jelly sandwich for kids, and there are kids that that's all they want.
Good.
We have a cheese sandwich for those kids that are nut allergy and may not want peanut butter sandwich or something else. We have hot entrees, and again, you've got to sample some of those today. But everything we serve is whole grain.
Right.
There's no salt, and the tabbouleh probably need a little salt.
No.
Probably need a little pepper.
No, it didn't.
But I didn't put any in because we don't use it in the schools.
Those are cook if he said that.
I remember the commodities used to come in from the USDA, and we used to get such things as mystery meat. You get any of that stuff now?
No. No, we don't. Unfortunately, we lost some of the things that Michael Marsonelli likes, and that's the butter. They used to send in blocks of butter, pounds of butter. Cheese, we'd still receive cheese, and we take it as a low sodium, low fat product. We are getting it shredded so that we can use it on sandwiches, pizzas, and things like that. We are also getting it sliced. But that is about, now, the other side of the protein, the commodities, most of the commodities that we take, spend our commodity dollars on are proteins, because that's the highest cost item on a plate. So what we do is we take products like beef, ground pork, chickens, we have them reprocessed into chicken patties, chicken breasts.
Mystery meat?
No mystery meat.
Okay.
No, we haven't had mystery meat for at least twenty-one years that I'm aware of. I think the mystery meat used to be the meatloaf that was made in the cafeterias, and again, we didn't know what was in it, so we gave it mystery meat. I think the name is still out there. We still wear that tag. Kids still tag us with mystery meat, but I can assure you, we can't even serve, really, it's hard for us to serve anything that has more than two or three ingredients. To serve something like a tuna noodle casserole, a turkey or chicken tetrazzini, we would be discarding it all, because if there's a pea in there, and a kid sees a green pea, boom, you know, there goes your turkey tetrazzini.
The other comment I had is bulgur is also a great breakfast cereal.
We're just getting, it's not as easy for us to find. I actually have to go to Waze to find a little packet. We've been trying to find a source through our distributors. They assure us that they will find it, and it'll probably come in fifty-pound bags, but that will be enough to feed the whole county on a given day. But yeah, it's a very good protein, and it's one that we're planning to use more as one of our vegetarian offerings, and we do have vegetarian offerings every day.
Good. And I want to thank you for these.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
If I may say, I'm very proud of my field manager, Ms. Pat Hollins, who was selected as the Montgomery County Support Services Employee of the Year. And it's one of the first times that the food service personnel was recognized like that. Ms. Hollins is currently training with five other managers at Alexandria City Public Schools, where they are working in their cafeterias today and tomorrow, because the concepts in our two new high schools, Auburn High and Blacksburg High, are almost identical to the concept there. So we'll be offering in these schools, our new schools, pizza ovens with fresh pizza on the serving line, paninis.
Hey.
Uh, garbanzo bean, what is the?
Hummus.
Hummus, thank you. Hummus and flatbread. So they're going to see a lot of new things. This is the second trip that I've had these gals go and spend three days or so, working in a school with our peers that are doing the things where we're moving. And it's a very rewarding opportunity for them, and they bring back a lot of good information. Otherwise, she would be here tonight, and I'd be able to introduce her to you.
But tough for us, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And who does this work?
This is one of the projects that we've been working with our dietetic interns and nutritionists. These gals are working with us, with a dietitian from Montgomery Regional Hospital, and they are Radford students.
Oh.
And we also have a group, Dr. Elena Serrano from Virginia Tech, and about twelve dietetic interns that are working on some other projects.
So these are sent home?
No, this is on our web, yes, we did. We did print these, and they are on our website.
Good.
You mentioned a minute ago, low sodium.
I'm sorry.
Low sodium?
Yes, sir.
So there is no salt? Is there any salt available to the students at all?
We do not offer salt to the students at all. The only salt they would get in our food is the salt that is in the production manufacturer of the food before we get it. There are salt shakers available in the cafeterias where the teachers can access them. The high school students, they do add salt to the french fries.
Okay.
That is the only item that we are doing that to.
So they can add salt to the french?
No, no salt packets or salt, no, we don't. I don't spend the money on it.
Okay.
I don't spend the money on it.
Next question. You mentioned working with Patty Goudreau. What is that connection as far as trying to extend educating the students on what they're eating? I mean, I see, you know, we just had some conversation about PE and health. So how do we tie what we're trying to accomplish in the lunch line to what they're trying to learn in PE and health? Or is there a connection?
There is a connection in that the students that were working with Ms. Goudreau and our cafeterias, and I'll give you an example, another elementary school, Christiansburg Primary, we were exposing them to some new vegetables, taking asparagus and fresh green beans and baking them. They're fabulous. They're fabulous. Then they are, have, the students have an education component that they will go into the classroom and then rededicate the ideas that they've tried to present in the cafeteria and share that with the students, talk about the healthfulness of the product, what part of the body it helps them, that they should be eating for their body, not just for the fun of eating. We've talked about, about the, you're hearing, the don't clean your plate effort now. I have, you know, in the school lunch program, we are providing them with portion, just the right portion. So we hope in the cafeteria that they do clean their plate. Maybe not at home, when they get a big plate of spaghetti and they don't need it all, but the idea is you don't have to clean your plate to get away from that stuffing, you know, you just eat it all. But there is, the education component is working with students, then college students going into the classroom and sharing the information about the foods that we presented.
Okay. Waste. And I read an article back when, I think, school started about that a lot of the new programs was going to generate a lot of waste. Do you track how much waste?
At Christiansburg Primary, again, we selected five, four pre-K and one kindergarten class. Again, Dr. Serrano from Virginia Tech and students came. Over the course of a whole week, they weighed, they knew what we prepared, they had all the values of what was what we prepared, and then they weighed every component that was wasted from the students' tray. So when the students came up, they actually put the vegetable in a vegetable bucket, the bread in a bread bucket, the milk in a bucket, and they weighed all of that food. Unfortunately, I have to share with you that the waste was over fifty-eight percent. Fifty-eight percent of the food that we prepared was discarded. Now, you have to remember that they're pre-K. When we give them even the minimum number of components for their tray, that's three components. It still seems to be a lot of food for them. What some young children that I have had, four of my own, I've noticed this, they won't eat anything. If it looks like it's too much, they'll sit there. Another issue is the talking. They get into that cafeteria for the first time after being in the classroom, having to be quiet, and they like to talk. I think that also has an impact on how much is eaten. And I'd like to share with you briefly, principal at Floyd County Schools, and you may have seen this written in the newspaper, did get some grief because she came from Roanoke, I think, out to Floyd. She instituted in her school the first ten minutes of the elementary school cafeteria lunchtime, silent lunch, just the first ten minutes. Well, I'll tell you, they saw an increase of over thirty percent more food being consumed just by making them be quiet for the first ten minutes. After the first ten minutes, they were letting them carry on as usual, but by knowing they have to be quiet for the first ten minutes, they get done eating, rather than the last minute going out the door eating over the trash can. That's what we see kids do.
That's an idea.
So I wouldn't be opposed to our elementary schools giving a ten-minute silent, first ten-minute silent lunch, and only elementary. Middle school and high school, it's not, it's not necessary, but I think.
I would be opposed with that.
You would be opposed?
But I wouldn't be. I'd be in favor of it.
The other, the other part of waste, though, is what you don't, what's not taken. Right.
Yes. Well, we batch cook throughout the meal.
Okay.
So we're constantly making that chicken product, that chicken breast.
Right.
During the meal, so that the kids getting the last, the child getting the last lunch is getting something as fresh and as hot as the child that came in and got the first. In the elementary levels, which is our highest participation.
But you still have some waste there where there's leftover food.
There is some. There is some, and we reuse it if we can.
Okay.
If it can be put into a soup, or made into, as an ingredient for another product, we can do that.
Okay.
Otherwise, it has to be discarded.
Okay. Do you have a percentage of how much prepared food that is not consumed is discarded?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay.
That information is kept, because by regulation, it is kept on production records, which we submit to the state.
Okay.
So all of that, all of that information, and it's different at different schools.
Right. Okay. And the biggest complaint that I hear- And the biggest complaint that I hear, and you touched on it a little bit, is the amount of time that students have for lunch. There is not enough time, the time that the students get to the lunchroom, go through the lunch line, obtain their food and sit down, they have five minutes left or they have 10 minutes left. And there is not enough time to consume. And I'll share from a personal experience, when my kids would pack, the reason they were packing was because of a time issue, not because they didn't want to eat in school. Okay. And I was curious as to what do you see with that as far as time?
Well, I know that we are moving our elementary school students to the serving line of an average of 20 students per classroom in four minutes. The remainder of that lunch period, which may be 25 minutes long or 30 minutes long, is theirs. Middle and high school kids, we have some issues with them, hearing their complaints, but also understanding what's happening. A lot of the children don't even come into the cafeteria until the last 10 or 15 minutes. They're given 45 minutes for the period and they can go play basketball or they can do something else, and then they run down and try to eat at the last minute. Our facilities are dated, many of them. So our serving areas may not be conducive to, or as conducive as our new school serving areas will be, where we have more access points. Unfortunately, in the areas of the sanitary straight line stainless steel serving, kids got to stand in line. Kids have to know their number. They have to be tell, they have to tell the server what it is they want. We're not permitted to put things on the tray, nothing. So we have to wait for them to tell us. And of course, we try to educate them and by the time they're middle school, they know that. By the time they're in second grade and third grade, really, they know that. But there are many reasons for children, taking children a lot of time to get through the serving line. And it's not because food is not ready.
Right, and that's not what I'm saying in my question. You know, my question really is, are we allowing enough time for kids to have a nutritious lunch and time for them to sit there?
Well, sir, I'll tell you, I would take every minute that I could get for a kid to have lunch. Unfortunately, we have to work that within, that lunch period has to work within the educational day and that is, they definitely need that amount of time. You know how that works, much better than I do. So we get carved out by law, a minimum of 20 minutes in high school, I think, 25 to 30 minutes in the elementary.
But our schools generally exceed that 20 minutes. The secondary schools range probably from 27 minutes to 45 minutes. The elementaries, the 25 to 30.
Do you ever take samples into the classroom to promote what your product is?
Well, we have been taking them in, we've been bringing kids and doing it in the dining, in the serving area, giving it as, not as a part of the component of the lunch, but offering it there. We just don't have the labor to do it.
Gotcha.
Unfortunately. My, I have some tremendous cafeteria managers out there that are in the classrooms and are doing nutrition education in many different ways, but not nearly to the extent. And again, I can't expect them, they're not really qualified. You know, many of my people are high school, with a high school education, they don't have any teaching degrees. So they would be sharing what probably is more personal feelings about things. So although many of them are very good and would do it, I don't require them to do it for fear that I would be presenting some misinformation unless I have the opportunity, of course, to preview their presentation. Any other questions?
Oh, mine's my question, but I do agree with you, and it might not be the first 10 minutes, even if it's the first, the second, but you're right. As many times as I've been in the lunchroom, there's more talking going on and eating. And then it's like, okay, kid, you've got 10, you know, five, 10 minutes, and they're like scarfing what they've got to eat down.
They're not allowed to take it to the classroom.
Right, you're right about that. And, but now, one of my questions was, you know, like artichokes and bean sprouts and stuff like that, the days that you have those and you find nobody takes them, do you put that, take it all? Because I do believe, and having three that's come through, I do believe, and I've talked to other parents that sometimes with things like that, the kids don't eat them, then they go home, and as soon as they get home, they start eating junk food. So who are we helping? Who are we helping? That's not our responsibility, but if we are tackling that, then, you know, we've got it available, but if no one's taking advantage of that and going home and eating the terrible things, you know?
As I've mentioned earlier, we're required to provide
Absolutely.
Certain fruits and vegetables, certain colors, certain number of times of the week.
But if we find we've got one of those that just nobody gets to do it.
And you won't see it, you won't see it again, no. We, you know, we do learn because we don't, we can't afford to spend money on something that's going to be discarded.
Thank you.
But we have to, you know, there aren't that many dark greens, you know, we can provide kale, spinach, collards, mustard green, turnip greens. But we won't be providing that, we won't be making them in great quantities. We'll make them in smaller quantities just because we know the children won't. Those are the items that we're trying to get them to sample for free. You know, we do everything, get them little vinegar packets or little hot sauce packets, because kids will eat it if you can put vinegar on it or there's hot sauce on it, or ketchup or ranch dressing. They're putting ranch dressing on spinach. I mean, I believe it.
It sounds good to me.
Oh yeah, there you go. It's fat-free too, by the way. But we are constantly trying to present new items that we can fold into a six-week cycle menu to show variety, to provide variety, to expose them to a variety of different vegetables and fruits that they may never see. And, you know, kids, tomatoes, you know, we got, we moved tomatoes by putting little cherry tomatoes in a parfait cup. We were serving cherry tomatoes, kids didn't want them. Soon as we put them in a little cute parfait cup, they went off the serving line like that. And believe it or not, they ate them. So it's in the packaging too, a lot of times. So we're going to be expanding our packaging as we can.
Any other questions, board members?
I'd just like to thank you. I know throughout the years, I have learned a lot about school nutrition and especially with the changes that we've had to go through this year. I thought it was important for folks to understand, you all just don't open up bags of things and throw them out there. There's a science to it and that you all prepare and understand what's going on with our children's and their nutrition. So I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah.
We'll be doing new breakfast next year, so ask me back and I'll tell you all about the new breakfast regulations.
And you'll bring us some goodie breakfasts, huh?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for the samples and taking time to preserve.
My pleasure.
And thank you to your staff.
And I'd like to invite you all to come to school and have lunch in one of the schools. And we'll try to get you through faster than 20 minutes.
Thanks, Michael. We appreciate it. Next item tonight is your textbook adoption for math and music. The textbooks for middle school math and supplemental elementary programs have been selected and recommended for your consideration this evening. You may recall that we adopted our high school math series last year and funds were inadequate to support at that time the middle school adoption as well. So this year, we're bringing back the middle school adoption and mathematics as well as a routine, I think it's every three years, we do some supplemental music materials. So they're presented this evening for you as an information item and will appear before you again on June 18th.
Board members, any comments or questions?
Has there been any studies to figure out the impact of not buying these books and buying devices instead to use in the math classes and the music classes?
There are a lot of places that are moving more and more to electronic formats for textbook materials in lieu of the regular hardbook text. The materials that we're adopting have supplemental electronic format materials, but we also have the textbooks.
Oh, that's great. Excellent, thank you. Now, is this supplements that students can take home?
They have disk that they can access, Jonathan, as I recall from our previous conversation, they can access the electronic resources online and/or they can get disk, I believe, from the schools.
Oh wow, that's a step in a great direction.
But we still have the textbooks because we don't have a one-to-one computing initiative in our district and we do not have every family with access to electronic format outside of the schoolhouse.
But the indication is that we're shifting.
We are very interested in it.
We're on the way, yes.
And every look we look at, we look for them to have the technology support.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Next item.
The next item is the district reorganization plan. Take just a minute and make some comments if they're still here. It looks like they disappeared in email never, never land. Which might be just as well, make it short. Well, they were there in notes, but they're gone, so.
Do you need mine?
Nope, they won't be in yours either.
Oh.
So I'll just speak very briefly then and tell you that I have spoken with you before about the potential for a need to do some reorganization of how the district leadership team is configured. I especially mentioned it last year in my self-evaluation because of the fact that we have so many new people who are coming into key leadership positions. And when you do that, you sometimes need to look at how you're going to administer the leadership team in some different ways, especially to support the strategic initiatives of the school division and the needs of the superintendent and the superintendent's leadership style. I have maintained the leadership team in exactly the format in which I found it. It worked for me for the time that we were here. We addressed a number of crisis issues, made me feel that it was not a time to restructure the leadership team. As we move right now into, from my leadership team and my office, we're losing about 93 years of history, some very, very important history. And I feel the need to perhaps look at how I facilitate the leadership in the district in a different way. Attachments to your agenda tonight are, first of all, the current organizational configuration and secondly, the proposed organizational configuration. The proposed organizational configuration creates two assistant superintendent positions, one in curriculum instruction, one that we already have as an assistant superintendent in operations. The major change is that it merges the function of director of elementary and supervision of elementary principals into the assistant superintendent's position and aligns all of the curriculum resources under the assistant superintendent of curriculum. Reduces by one, the number of direct reports that the school superintendent has at this point and aligns the director of secondary, who's also going to be a new position for us beneath the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction and aligned with all the other curriculum resources. The reorganization is at no increased cost to the school division, it's done within the current budget. It, in fact, because of the fact that we're replacing some employees who have great longevity, it actually reduces the budget for the superintendent staff to about $12,000 for 2013, 2014. It's presented for your consideration for your action this evening.
I need a motion, board members, this is brought forth for.
I want to, yes, I want a second.
Okay, so we now have a motion and a second, and we open it up for discussion, comment.
I have one question. Ms. Blackburn, will you explain why high and middle school principals would have set one, two, three levels before they get to you, but then elementary school principals will be more direct? How, why would you divide it that way?
Well, there are two reasons really. Number one, I'm going to have a new person in the director of secondary and so there will be a lot of things about the culture of the organization, the rules, the policies and those kind of things that will be new for that director. And so some of it will be a learning curve. Secondly, for all the fact that probably the most important stuff you ever learn is in K6, the biggest pushback that you get and the most issues that you have are in schools that are secondary in nature. That comes because of the fact that students have begun to lose interest, becomes, because of the fact that students are moving into puberty and you have more behavior problems. It becomes true because parents many times have lost control of their children at that point. It's very unfortunate to have to say that, but they have lost control or they've lost their way in working with their children and they need more support. So I can tell you that of the calls that get to my desk, even with a very, very experienced staff, that the number that come from secondary schools probably is triple the number that you get from elementary school. So that's another reason for doing it that way.
Any other comments or questions?
I've been here with three superintendents and each one has aligned things to have things work best for them, so I'm ready to vote.
Yeah, call the question.
Okay, all those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Don't know what happened to the notes, but I guess it didn't matter. Next, next item, yeah, I remembered them, I memorized them. No child left behind, title funding?
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Let me just tell what you're seeing.
No, it's only proper information only.
That's what I thought.
Tonight, you're seeing for the first time your Title I applications, Title I Part A, Title II Part A, Title III Part A. You will notice if you look at the totals on the applications that the expected funds in Title I, II and III are about $220,000 less than the funds that were provided this year. And you previously approved, I believe, the IDEA grant, and it also showed a potential decline of about $220,000 in resources for 13, 14. So tonight, these are here for your information. If you have any questions, we've got the appropriate staff and the audience to assist in answering those.
And the decrease in funds is because of sequestration?
It's largely because of sequestration. It could be because of some decrease in child count for special ed, but largely because of the potential impact of sequestration. And it's also still an estimate because the state doesn't have its exact funding from the, from the feds yet.
Board members, any comments or questions? Again, it's brought to us before, brought before us as information only.
I'll just thank you very much for going for it. Very much.
Next item?
Next item is the principal and assistant principal evaluation handbook. It's also presented for your information this evening. This is part of the ongoing process in the state of Virginia to align evaluations for instructional personnel to meet the requirements of the federal government and also to meet the requirements that have been developed by the Virginia Department of Education and approved by the state legislature. Essentially, the MCPS principal and assistant principal evaluation handbook was created by a committee that was formed in the fall. It included assistant principals, principals, curriculum supervisors and directors within our district. Sharon, Frances Zucker, Warlow, is Graham, Tara Grant, they're listed for you in your item. And the document is presented this evening for your information and will come back to you for approval on the 18th. The major change in the document is that it requires 40% of the evaluation be tied to student growth, which is the same as the requirement for teachers that we approved last year. And that will be also a requirement for superintendent evaluations effective with the 2014 school year.
I don't think we approved it, I think we were told we had to approve it.
I understand.
And I'm curious, I asked you earlier, there's just one evaluator per principal.
That is correct, there's one evaluator.
And then if, as I shared with you, the principal and the evaluator don't get along, have a problem or something, the principal or assistant principal can?
They have a grievance procedure.
Grievance procedure.
So this is also part of, I mean, we're going to have to incorporate this into policy as well. I mean, we have a policy on evaluation.
You have on your agenda tonight, your policy 5-4.5
Right.
Is your licensed personnel evaluation policy and it reflects the changes that were required in this new evaluation system.
Okay. I guess the other thing related to evaluation is I looked through the.
I guess the other thing related to evaluation as I look through this is, you know, part of evaluation is growth and trying to grow our own, as I call it. And, you know, here recently, we've had a number of positions come open that I would hope that in the future, we're gonna be able to start to feel from within. And the evaluate, what I don't see in this evaluation is some component that tries to mentor, tries to bring along, you know, administrators who want to, to move up and to aspire to, to a different level of, of supervision or part of, move into a different role or whatever it may be in central office or anything like, of that nature. It may be somewhat in goal setting.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, the, the, the whole evaluation process historically, and not just in the school systems, but in all entities have been looked upon as a, somewhat of a punitive thing and an unpleasant thing. And I think our goal should be to try to focus on, you know, building up people instead of telling them what they're doing wrong and trying to help them become better administrators and better principals and better teachers and better superintendents and better board members. You know, it, and, and that's, to me, is what lack, is lacking in this. This is, this is so black and white and.
It is, but it's a, I think it's a catch twenty-two.
You know.
There are, there are some administrators who aspire to be an assistant principal or that, in that realm. And to what I, and I'm agreeing with you a hundred percent, but I'm thinking that instead of having it be in the evaluation process, there should be, for lack of a better word, a, an academy where those who aspire to become principals, supervisors, directors, assistant superintendents, that the avenue can be for them. But I don't, I don't know how you, I, I think there's something statewide, but I don't think we have it local.
That's correct. And the statewide organizations are fee-based, and in the current economic climate, we've not been able to send people to either principal academies or superintendent's academies or those kinds of things. They're fairly pricey, so it's been at the individual employee's discretion if they wanted to enroll in that kind of prog, program. I've spoke, spoken with Mr. McElandra about developing something in-house based on the recent process of going through the selection of three key individuals at the leadership level and doing some things with interviewing skills and some self-assessment about where the weakness, weaknesses are, where the strengths are. And so, we are going to try to do something that's in-house for leadership development, hopefully beginning in the fall. In the booklet that you have that's been developed, I would say probably the best quick snapshot of what happens in this process is on page eight because it does talk about in there self-reflection. It talks about informal observations and school site visits that take place by the supervisor. They take, talk about a principal or personnel leadership position, uh, developing a portfolio and a document log that shows the kinds of things they're doing that are but be of and above and beyond, you know, the day-to-day operation or day-to-day position expectations. We've been doing the climate surveys every year using the, in a, the NASP three sixty assessment, and I've been sharing those with you, with our principals. And this year, we're using the advanced ed. If you take that advanced ed survey and you have a conversation with your supervisor about it, there's a lot of great stuff in there that gives you tips about how to improve our performance. The goal-setting piece Mr. Jones mentioned, and that's huge, and we have to take the time to do the goal-setting piece. And doing interim conferences and discussions with, you know, when a person, when a person does something that isn't working, it needs to be dealt with it right then, just like with a student. You know, you need to talk with the administrator about, well, this is what I'm seeing, this is what you did. In retrospect, how might you deal with it differently? Because that's how you grow professionally. And so, there are key elements in there, I think, that support growth, but I think we need an internal leadership development academy, and it's on my list of things to do for next year.
Along with Mr. McElandra and the HR folks, help, a lot of help.
I absolutely agree that we should be providing any support we can for folks who wanna move up in the district, but I want to raise the point that we don't have enough African-American or other minorities in the district to have a present in each, a presence in each one of our schools at this time. And if all we're doing is trying to build from within, we're gonna continue to look the same way. So, I just, you know, make sure that we understand we're not gonna become incestual with what we're going to try to do with this, I hope.
I recently met with some of our minority employees, teachers primarily, but also some in leadership positions. And some of the things that we talked about are some grow-your-own initiatives, you know, in addition to the teachers who are representative of minority groups. We have folks within our support staffs. We have people in our maintenance and warehouse and cafeteria programs that may have aspirations to work in different capacity. We have teachers who have aspirations to be administrators, and certainly the leadership development that we do needs to extend not just to developing the principals or the folks who are already in leadership positions, but developing teachers who are teacher leaders and who are interested in other positions. We started reaching out to see which of our high schools have future educator groups and which ones don't, and looking to see if we have any minority candidates in those future educator groups that we could groom. But, you know, something that I would love to see us, you know, do to find a partner with or to take on as a board is the ability to do something to get the kids who leave us and who are minority candidates who go somewhere else when they finish. If we were able to do some tuition kind of waivers or some incentive kind of things to say, okay, come back and teach for us three years and, you know, good things are gonna happen in terms of our ability to, you know, offset some of the expenses. That's how a lot of school districts are able to attract minority candidates. And, you know, quite frankly, if you are a young African-American who is very talented in mathematics, science, technology, or engineering, the economic rewards of the teaching profession are not going to be what attracts you to it. And so, that's one reason why I'm very, very interested in the, in the future educator groups because those are kids who have said, you know, this is something that's attractive to me, but it's pretty hard for me to bring you here at thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars when I've got somebody else right around the corner offering you eighty to start. And so, there are a lot of obstacles, but they're not totally insurmountable. But this business of being able to create and provide, to get support within our community to be able to provide some of these incentives, I think, is large. Just as the chamber has stepped up with support for the teacher of the year, we need other business and industry to step up to try to create the kind of diversity in our educators that we know that our students are gonna experience when they walk out into the world.
And that kind of goes into what, on page twelve, I would love to see the last item listed under standard two, school climate. Number one, the top one maintains a positive inviting school environment that promotes and assists in the development of the whole student and values every student as an important member of the school community. I'd love to see that right at the top, above the incorporate knowledge. I hope you can do that.
I, I think you're seeing the order as placing a value.
Yeah.
And in the instance of the evaluation instrument, the order does not, is not indicative of the value.
I understand that.
Of the statement, but I, I do hear what you're saying.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Next item.
Next item is the FY thirteen budget update, and Katie and Walt and I have talked about this a little bit, and I'm just gonna ask Katie if she would, if she would come up and speak with you about what we know now, keeping in mind that everything that you hear this evening is subject to change between now and June the eighteenth, but we do need to give you some initial information.
Good evening. Um, as Ms. Blackburn mentioned, I'm gonna discuss kind of where we are right now with the closeout of the fiscal year, and as of May thirty-first, the projected balance of carryover funds may be as much as about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. The potential projected balance does not include the final state revenue numbers based on the March thirty-first, two thousand thirteen ATM, which are expected to decrease based on our calculations.
Slow down just a little bit.
So, you're saying that might take money away from this hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
There are still federal grant reimbursements that have not been received, and we have until the end of this week to submit those reimbursement requests, and these would cover expenditures that we actually have already incurred.
So, that might return money, make the one fifty-eight go up?
No, 'cause we've already spent the money, so no.
Gotcha. Just fills the hole.
Yes. Um, so now, we're also currently looking at any open purchase orders that we have to close those out. We're receiving some final invoices, hopefully here in the next couple of weeks, and then we're reviewing encumbrances that will be carried over. All of those amounts will reduce the amount of carryover that we have. And as required, we will close out the year with a positive balance, but it will be a minimal amount that we will have to carry over. And you'll remember last year, we carried over for fiscal year two thousand twelve to this year, six hundred and about fifteen thousand dollars. In addition to the operating fund, we will still have a portion of the four hundred thousand dollar capital improvements to carry over since some of the money has not yet been encumbered for the board identified projects. There also may be a little bit additional Medicaid reimbursement that will be carried over. And as Ms. Blackburn mentioned, we will hope to have more information, or we will have more information for you, um, the June eighteenth meeting. Are there any questions?
Any questions, comments?
So, when you're talking about the money's not identified for, with the four hundred thousand, that would be that twenty-five thousand matching funds that we're waiting to hear on grant?
Yes, ma'am.
And we did just get a SIPS memo about the fact that that, the, an additional technical assistance paper is expected forthwith to tell us how to apply for that money, but not there yet.
So, the number right now is looking at about a hundred and fifty grand, thereabouts?
Yes, sir.
Better than nothing, but.
Again, as budgets have to come smaller, the carryforward's gonna be smaller. I know in the past, you've had, you know, a million and a half, two million dollars. We're gonna be lucky if we come in with as much as we had last year.
And how much is the state docking us again coming year? Do we know? How much less will we get from the state?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but right this second, you had ten million dollars less state money in your budget than you had in two thousand and eight.
Exactly. Yep.
Thank you. Next item.
All right, the next item is the legislative policy updates, and these are presented tonight for your information. You'll notice that the beginning of the agenda item is basically a description of the actions by the general assembly that are driving most of the policy revisions that are in here. We work with Mr. King's office and his assistants to develop the policies, and they are presented this evening for information. I believe there's only one that was not directly out of your office, and I'm happy to speak to that one, but perhaps I should just turn it over to you to see if there are questions about any of them at this point.
Board members, comments, questions?
I have a ton of comments. I'll try to keep it low. But I was interested, under SB eleven ninety-six, requires the Board of Education to include in its annual report to the governor and the general assembly, information about parent and student choice in each school division and any plans that school divisions have to increase school choice. We've never, I mean, if somebody decides to go somewhere else to school out of our district, we haven't had to share that before?
We report home school students to the best of our ability at this point. There are no charter schools in Montgomery County. The choice within the school district would be the ability to transfer from one school to another.
Right.
Based on an out-of-area or out-of-district assignment. But this is essentially the, the reporting per se is a new requirement.
Yeah. I just wasn't happy with it, you know? Um, there's a lot of things I thought were good, but. It says, requires each school safety audit committee to conduct a school inspection walkthrough using a standardized checklist and to make the checklist available to the chief law enforcement officer of the locality upon request. The bill also requires each public school to conduct at least two lockdown drills, one in September and one in January of each school year, which, have we implemented any of that?
We implemented.
That's what I thought.
A lockdown drill last year.
Right.
And we have already scheduled our first one for the fall, and so this is all coming off the increased attention at the state level to safety. And our actions to this point fully support everything that's in the general assembly requirement, and we will go to the technical assistance meetings that they have forthcoming, and we'll meet the requirements without any issue.
And then HP thirteen fifty, I wonder who pays, requires the local school divisions to provide targeted mathematics remediation and intervention to students in grade six through eight who show computational deficiencies as demonstrated by their individual performance on any diagnostic test or grade level SOL, mathematic assessment that measures non-calculus computational skills.
Comes from the school budget.
We pay for that, even though they are mandating it.
That is correct.
Yeah. I mean, I could go on and on. They're mandating things, and yet we have to pay for it.
That's correct.
Yeah. That's with the standard or advanced studies diploma requires first-time ninth-grade students to receive training in emergency first aid, cardiopulmonary resuscitation, and the use of automated external defibrillator, including hands-on practice of the skills necessary to perform cardiopulmonary resuscitation in order to earn a standard or advanced studies diploma. And we have to pay for that.
We will have to pay for that. Currently, we're working to, to take care of the adult side of it by using existing resources, resources. Joni Underwood is gonna do some training sessions for our employees, but basically it is an unfunded mandate.
This is for all first-time ninth-grade students?
Uh, effective two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah, but still, funding is from our budget.
That's correct.
And it goes on and on. If anybody in the public would like to see this, could get it to you, but it's very sad. Requires all local school divisions to offer early intervention reading services and algebra readiness intervention services, which I love, but again, we pay for it. Right?
From your current budget.
From our current budget.
Are they all effective two thousand, different dates?
They, they have different dates, and most of these are effective with the four, two thousand fourteen, thirteen, fourteen. If they July one, the majority of these are, Brad?
Most of them say if it's not the next school year.
Correct. They're all July one unless they say otherwise.
Exactly. It's incredible what they're forcing on us without giving us money to do it. Very upset. Thank you, Virginia.
So, Mr. King, are there any in here that change what we're doing that we really have to adjust our policies?
Yes.
Yeah.
My editorial is the general assembly was very busy this year as compared to previous years. My, as it relates to public schools. My impression is that because there were not money issues, in other words, there was not more money to give to schools for initiatives, they did a lot of other things that affect operations. The superintendent's already, by the way, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Superintendent, members of the board. There, I, I see them in a couple of clusters. One that the superintendent already spoke to was, was safety, and you'll see that throughout. There are a number of policy changes that are required. There are also a whole lot of suggestions, and if you look at the document, the way we prepared it this year, the front-end document the superintendent referenced, by your policy manual sections, we put the policy changes that are required first in narrative and then regulations slash practice changes where the general assembly said things in law, but they didn't say you have to actually physically adopt a policy. adopt a policy that says that. But I think safety was the real big one. The other big one is a difficult one to talk about, frankly, because it infects a lot of your employment base, and that is, they have completely revamped the continuing contract status for teachers. And I think I've got to point out to you that, it was in the headlines, everybody knows, that continuing contract for teachers can be up to five years now at your discretion. And if a teacher has obtained continuing contract in another locality and moves here, the law has been that you may grant, may require that teacher to survive an additional one-year probationary period with you before obtaining continuing contract here. You now have the discretion to expand that to two. Your administration, by policy recommendation, has decided not to opt into either of those, to keep it at three and one respectively. I will tell you that the VSBAs' model policies that are going out to many of your neighboring districts all make those moves to two and five. So I think you'll have some experience with that, and the administration may be making different recommendations moving forward, but as of right now, they're not recommending that you use your discretion or exercise your discretion to extend those. I think those are the two really big areas, along with the continuing contract changes. The entire grievance procedure has been changed for teachers, and so, we'll have to see how that plays out as well. Historically, you all have just simply had a policy that says, "We adopt the state grievance procedure," and we don't recodify it as part of your policy manual, and we're not recommending that you change that at this point. The big change to the grievance procedure in the past, if a teacher was recommended for termination, she could elect to either have her case heard before a three-member fact-finding panel, or directly to you all. In those instances where she elected fact-finding panel, the Constitution of Virginia says only school boards get to make those decisions. So fact-finding panel decisions had to come to you ultimately anyway. The way the grievance procedure's been rewritten now, the fact-finding panel's been removed, and you all, you all may send the case to a separate independent hearing officer, but it's one person rather than three. And it's at your choice, not the employee's choice. So that's a, that's a pretty significant change in the rights for, you know, hopefully, we don't have too many of those, and in my history with you all, we don't have many of them. Other school districts have more.
In my recommendations about the three and one, a couple of things that we did consider, we did some phone calling to some of the other surrounding places, and it was pretty much a mixed bag, you know, some schools moving to five, some school districts sticking with three. And you do have the option, it's not you make a decision and that's the last time you have an opportunity to review this. If it continued, if it became a problem or a concern, the board would have the opportunity, just as Brad said also, to review it in the next year if you wanted to increase it. Largely, our three and one appears to be working, and that was another reason that I felt it was probably best to sit on the current probationary status for another year and see how we feel.
Brad?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, Ms. Auburn, go ahead.
So you were saying the probationary period would carry over from another district?
It's not quite what I said. Let's say someone taught in Floyd and had been there nine years, and so, she was a continuing contract teacher. She decides she wants to move here, you all offer her a position. When she moves, the law currently, before July 1, says you may require her to complete a one-year new probationary period with you, rather than, not the three, just one. Now, the law says you could actually make that two.
Okay.
And what Superintendent has said is she's going to recommend that you stay with the one for right now.
My question here is about creates the opportunity educational institution...
All right, let me, Ms. Auburn, if I may...
Sorry, go ahead.
Let me finish with the grievance procedure before you move on to another one.
Sure.
It's my opinion that the General Assembly did not do a very good job with the revamping of the grievance procedure, these substantive issues aside. The grievance procedure has three parts. The first one has definitions. The second is grievances for everything except for dismissals. And the third one is dismissals. Well, there's a fact-finding provision, fact-finding panel provision in Part II as well, meaning grievances other than termination. It is very unclear, the way the law was written, whether or not those have been affected as well. So I think that in the next year, there probably are going to be questions, developments. The Department of Education, I understand informally and indirectly that the Board of Education is already sort of addressing some of these issues as they're percolating. So I'm not sure that we have good answers to all of it. I'm not always inclined to say wait and see, but in this instance, it might be, I think the Superintendent's recommendations are probably very good, if that makes any sense.
Okay. If yours is not...
Ms. Auburn, I'm sorry.
Grievance, because I've got a question.
Yeah, about another, another resolution, no, it's not about grievance.
Okay. So you're saying the fact-finding panel of three is gone?
For terminations, it's absolutely gone. I think it's unclear whether it would still be available otherwise, though my advice to the school district would be that it is gone.
Okay, so those come directly to us, and then, we can refer them back to a single person?
Correct.
And a single person would determine whether...
Single person would, is a hearing officer, standing in the place of the fact-finding panel. Ultimately, you all, under the Constitution of Virginia, have to make the final call.
Interesting.
Board members, any additional questions or comments?
Yeah. Under SB 1324, "Creates the opportunity educational institution to be administered and supervised by a nine-member OEI board. The bill requires that any school that has been denied accreditation be transferred to the OEI. The OEI board may require schools accredited with warning for three consecutive years, et cetera, et cetera." Is the OEI...
We don't know anything about it yet. I mean, what you've read...
Could it be a private institution?
It's going to be set up, as I understand it, by the state. I, you know, I think this is what has pejoratively been referred to as the takeover bill...
Exactly.
Where there are, where there are school districts that have not been performing well. I think we don't know much about it at all. Madam Superintendent, if you have more insight than I, please.
I do.
So you've heard nothing about maybe privatization in this?
It didn't get any money, for one thing.
Correct. There's not enough money in that bill to pay for an administrator for the building, let alone to support, I think it's a hundred and some thousand dollars in the budget bill.
Language, but no money.
Correct.
Language, but no money. Okay. Thank you.
Better things to do.
"Requires all local school divisions to offer early intervention reading services and algebra readiness intervention services." Again, we pay.
Yes, I mean, Madam Superintendent, I don't understand the funding formula nearly as well as you and your finance people do. I would imagine that some of the SOL money may be used for those purposes, but it's no new money.
Exactly.
So it's stretched to, am I correct about that?
That's correct.
This is page after page of requirements without funding. It's incredible.
The new funds to Montgomery County from the state were somewhere around $600,000. That was all the new money from the state to Montgomery County.
Incredible.
I'm glad to take questions between now and the next board meeting.
Right.
If you have clarifications...
I just need one clarification, if I could. Under students, Section 7, under students, it's the third one down, HB 1866. It says, "Removes certain weapons from the definition of firearm possession."
You'll remember that there's a Federal Gun Free School Act...
Right.
That says, "Thou shalt not bring a gun to school, and if thou does, the school board has to kick you out, has to expel you, unless there are mitigating circumstances." The way Virginia implemented that years back was to incorporate some definitions that may have been inconsistent with the federal law, meaning they were more inclusive, more weapons were included in the state's definition of firearm or gun for purposes of that law. So now, the law, the state law has been conformed to the federal law, removing certain weapons that historically your administrators have had to bring to you because of the Virginia definition. I believe it's within your prerogative to keep those in your list if you want. The way we've drafted the revised policy is to eliminate them. But if you want to restore them, because, for instance, you believe that a knife with three-and-a-quarter inch blade on it is still a dangerous item, you may want to restore that to your code of conduct because you still want to see those kids for expulsion. The law says only those guns, as defined in Virginia law, guns, firearms, whatever that meet the weapons definition, are required to come to you. Am I explaining that sufficiently?
You are.
So you may restore those if you would like to and still see those children. The law does not require that those weapons that we've removed from the list be automatic for expulsion.
Okay. I'll think on it. Thank you.
This is another one I didn't understand. The establishment of a threat assessment teams for each school, including procedures for the assessment of an intervention for students whose behavior poses a threat to the safety of school staff or students.
Yeah, Ms. Auburn, I would actually celebrate this one. I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it has all the components we'd like.
Right.
But we are often left in the situation where we're having to evaluate whether or not children are posing threats because of different displays of behavior and otherwise. Before now, I think it's been sort of unclear what we're permitted to do, and this just authorizes us to do it. Whether the makeup of the team is appropriate, I'm not sure, but it also allows us to share that information with law enforcement and mental health professionals to help prevent the kinds of episodes we've seen around the country.
No, I liked it too. I just didn't understand it. Yeah, thank you.
Any additional questions, board members?
They're for information, and if you, you know, peruse them a little bit more and have questions, if you would funnel them through me, we'd be happy to try to get you some answers in advance if there's some specific issues that you may have. Next item is Policy 3-3.2, modification or improvement requests for school board facilities, and this is one that I initiated. You may recall that there have been two times in the past four months, I guess, that I have addressed this specific issue through your board update. One was when we had a petition from the Blacksburg High School wanting to improve their track to a rubberized track on their new field. Now, was that a cost of about $123,000? So I made you aware and asked if you wanted it to come back to the board, if anyone felt it should. Then, in April, I told, I wrote in the board update that we didn't have a policy that actually set a dollar value limit that would be heard by the board, that essentially, all of those community projects had been handled at the superintendent's level through a process that included filling out a form that I think you've seen before. It's a project approval request form. And I felt that there should be a dollar value threshold at which those improvements to your facilities, although made with community dollars or PTA, PTO dollars, that they should probably come to you, and you have an opportunity to say yea or nay. I had initially thought $100,000, and then, in working with Brad's office, reduced that to $50,000. So essentially, what this says is that you currently have a project approval process that allows the superintendent and the, working with the information provided from the facilities department, to approve these kinds of projects. The policy would then say that if the estimated value of the project is going to be over $50,000, that it would then come to the board for approval. And that's the policy that's been created here, and it also is for your information this evening.
Board members, comments, questions?
On the policy?
I don't know that I'm that comfortable with the dollar amount of $50,000, but the big concern for me is making sure that the board is aware of whatever projects are going on within the district, and how that's going to affect, for example, Christiansburg High School in the softball field, in the practice field, and how that limited space is going to be used and still be able to meet the needs that have been identified in the schools.
This is not generally for district money, because the district projects are approved through your capital project, capital maintenance project listing that we've talked about in here before, like we picked out the $400,000 projects.
Right.
This is generally community money, it's, or money that's been fundraised at the school level. So they would propose a project, it would be reviewed, determined what it might cost, would it require a building permit, is it educationally appropriate for the school, and a decision made using that money. The project like a Christiansburg High School, with the softball field, a community group could come with a proposal to do that and money to do it, but the value on it, I think, is about $160,000 that would come to the board.
Right. I was, I was talking about, for example, the practice field there, that was community money, and those types of projects, making sure that they come before the board and we are aware of what's going on before the ground starts to move.
I would agree with that.
Or even if they're proposed, because at one time, the groups actually came before the board and would do, would ask, "Give us their proposal and let us, let the board hear exactly what they would like to do before anything went any further."
Right now, there's no policy that provides guidance for either that format or the format that I'm proposing, and so, I really don't feel comfortable with the fact that there is no policy on this. So that's why I'm suggesting that you identify one. We've been keeping you aware of little projects through the facilities update that we do, but they, you know, we've done pavilions, outdoor classrooms, raised bedding boxes. We've done recently a greenhouse at Gilbert Lincoln's that was grant-funded. So we've been including those kinds of things in the facilities update that Dan does. But, for example, suppose, right now, like with the rubberized track, you had no policy that said that needed to come to the board, whether it be $50,000 or $100,000. So I'm just suggesting a policy, this is a starting point. The board might want to put a different dollar value on it. I would think that you would want to put a dollar value on it, because you could spend a lot of time reviewing a lot of stuff that has very low cash value and that doesn't negatively impact your facilities, but just, just a thought.
And I agree, we, it would be a good idea to have a policy, but, for example, the rubberized track, when we were discussing what was going to, you know, occur at Blacksburg High School, whether it be the track or whatever else that was cut because funding wasn't there, I thought the understanding was that was going to be coming back to the board anyway, to make the determination, because those things have maintenance issues and things like that. So I absolutely agree, we need to have some kind of policy in place, because I'm not feeling always up-to-date is exactly what's going on, or that the board is, you know, there's a loop, there's a hole in the loop, and I think the policy would help that.
And I'm all, I'm really excited that you presented us with this. I'm interested, though, that you said this is mainly oriented to non-division money, and I think that should be made, you know, I didn't, I didn't understand that, and I probably missed something, that I didn't get that, so it might help. And I would also agree that we need to, I would want to see projects that are $50,000 or, you know, maybe set at $10,000, I don't know, but I think that's a pretty high number. But I would like to see it, modification or improvement requests for school board facilities that's from the community, right? Is that...
Most of them are from the community, but in the instance of the Blacksburg High School rubberized track...
Uh huh.
That I briefed you about in the board update, it was school internal account money.
Okay, so this...
So they were school funds that were being requested...
Right.
To be used for that purpose.
Right.
And there was no policy that required it to come here, so I told you about it in a different way.
Understood, and I think it's really important for us to have this. It's awesome. And I think, though, I thought it was just for internal money and not from community money, so it might be good to add that, and I agree with Penny that. Now, number two, that's the amount.
Board members, any other comments or questions?
Why, why did you decide? What... Why, why did you decide, what, why did Brad and you decide at fifty thousand dollars?
Brad might want to weigh in. I initially suggested a hundred thousand dollars. I have worked with a policy like this in a previous district, and the number there was a hundred thousand dollars. So that's the number I put. And the suggestion when I worked through Brad's office with the policy, Mr. Shannon coordinated it, is that we might want to lower it to fifty.
I don't want to, Nikki, you worked directly with Walt on this, so I don't want to misrepresent any of those conversations. My surmise is a hundred thousand dollars is the threshold for small purchase procedures under the Procurement Act, and it might be tied to that. I think there's a general concern that's already been expressed, that as a board, you always have to strike the balance between what your policymaking role is and your supervision role. On the way down here today, I was talking about with a superintendent in another district, where the school board wanted to approve thousand dollar purchases. Well, it hamstrings the administration. They can't do anything. And that was on building projects for change orders. Well, if you're in multimillion dollar construction projects and there's an emergency, like you find, as this superintendent did, an old oil tank that was leaking, that had to, somebody needed a fifteen hundred dollar job to get it cleaned up that day to prevent future harm, you can't convene a school board meeting in order to take care of that. So I think there's got to be a balance between sort of the practical approach. What I was thinking with Ms. Franklin was raising the concern is, you can certainly modify the policy to say, whatever threshold you decide, that the administration must keep the board promptly apprised of all decisions that are made.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that can be a way to address it, to make sure that you get the information timely, but at the same time, authorizing the administration to act on your behalf when it's prudent to do so. But if Mr. Shannon wants to chime in on exactly why?
The hundred thousand dollar was, was set there because based on current things that we do on procurement, following procurement policy, you're doing this just for capital projects, and you're tying the superintendent's hand. Because right now, we approve projects at a hundred thousand dollars that are done in the operating budget, and you, you don't see them until you see the bills.
But why did you lower it to fifty?
It was because it's a new policy. This was a new procedure, put it in place. We don't, do not get very many projects that are coming in separate from school PTA type projects that are over fifty thousand. There's a few that come in, and fifty thousand was just a starting point. But I'm just letting you know that we actually approve higher dollar amounts than that in the operating budget than we do through this in the, in capital projects. And it was written to apply for any source of funds. Some of these projects, when we do them in a school project, require some school operating money to go along to complete the, the project, because sometimes it's our facilities people that have to go in with a backhoe or equipment, or we have to put a sewer line in or a water line. We do that in-house, and that's using school board funds. And so it applies both with the school activity fund and the potential school board funds.
So you feel that fifty thousand wouldn't tie your hands?
Fifty thousand is a good starting point.
Okay.
But, but I'm just letting you know that currently, under the procurement, when we do formal procurement and so forth, we're approving projects now that are over a hundred thousand dollars that are, are done as part of, part of the budget. So the fifty thousand is not a, a large, a large number.
And the hundred thousand?
A, a school bus is seventy-eight thousand dollars. And we approve four, four purchases of, of a school bus, and things like that do not come, come before you directly for that individual purchase. They're using part of the budget, so.
Right, and those are approved through the budget. So the hundred thousand is through the procurement regulations, which is state?
Yeah. What, what that does, it, it's a difference between formal and informal procurements and putting things out for advertisement.
That's already, that's already there. It's already written, so we, we know that that's, that's going to be happening. Whether, we don't see it until it's actually done. There are projects that we know that are happening in the district. We just might not know the time that it's happening, right? But we know that hundred thousand dollars can be spent or above.
Yeah. That was the portion that's written in there that says, any modification to a school facility that changes the original purpose of that, come to the board irregardless of the dollar amount, because it's changing the, the purpose. If we go in and change a, a room which was built for guidance in a building, and we want to change it to a classroom or clinic or, or, or something, something else, those would come before the board, because it's changing the original purpose of the, of the facility. You would see those regardless of all, but this is, the fifty thousand is a good starting point, and that was the, the routine. Hundred thousand doesn't bother me, but, you know, when you're dealing with bond projects and a hundred and twenty-four and a half million dollars, we, we run through, you know, quite, quite a few things on that. But this would be a good starting point, to give you that. And through administratively, the board would be advised of every project that we do, both, both small and large. It just allows us to move, move forward with it without having to wait to bring it before the board on smaller projects. But we can do it anywh- however you, you desire.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, board members? I mean, I, I would like to be informed, or at least I agree with Ms. Franklin, about better understanding or better knowledge of what is going on. And the other thing, too, that's related to this, is it-
Let me just ask better. We're already in the facilities update. We're telling you about the small projects that are being approved. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out if there's something more that you want than for us to do it through that facilities update. I've been using the board update and using the facilities update that Mr. Berenato does to advise you about the small projects. Prior to doing those things, I'm not sure how you were made aware or if you were made aware, but I am doing, using those two vehicles for all the small projects.
Right. And what I'm talking about is from a policy standpoint, it states that the board will be informed of these things as they are approved. Okay? We had this for forty thousand dollars come to us, and here's what we approved.
So that's kind of what we're already doing through the facilities update and the board update.
But would it be included then, I mean, this is new, because you wanted to really have something in structured writing approach, which I agree with. So do you want to add that kind of thought to it? Yeah. And then this is for both school?
It can be, yes.
For the divisions and the non-division?
But mostly, the discretionary projects that we get like that are funded by non-school money.
Right.
Because your capital money is very, very limited.
Right. But when I read it, I just assumed it was our money, not of anybody else's.
My only concern is I want to make sure that any group that has money, that's going to, wants to do something to our facilities, that they recognize that they have to have approval before they step onto the property and do something. And that has not always occurred, okay? We've had people step onto the property and do things, make modifications to certain things, and they haven't had proper authority or approval to do so. And I want to make sure that these groups understand that they, just because they have a lot of, they've gotten all the money, that they can just start making improvements, whatever they may be. I'm not going to spend any more time on it.
I agree with you.
Next item. July meeting dates. Is that all you have? July meeting dates. Historically, we have canceled the dates in the month of July, and those would be July the second and July the sixteenth. It's my understanding that we've had a conflict with the July sixteenth meeting now as far as a school board retreat. So we have that on a later agenda item, but I think at this time, if we have a motion to cancel those two meetings for discussion?
So moved.
Okay? It was Jamie? So the motion is that we cancel the July second meeting and the July sixteenth meeting, which are traditionally the first and third Tuesdays in the month. Any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, meeting dates have been canceled. Next item on our agenda is unfinished business. Does any, first item under unfinished business is board retreat. We now have a conflict with the sixteenth, and so we're now back to, I guess, square one on dates for a school board retreat. And it mentioned at our last meeting in May that we might want to consider the dates we may just canceled in July as a possible school board meeting date for retreat. I open it up to this board for discussion on dates.
What about the second Tuesday of July?
The second Tuesday of July is July the ninth.
Ninth, yeah. Keep it on a Tuesday, but.
Or do we table the discussion until the fall of the year, when the vacation season is somewhat over with and bang?
I like that idea.
I do, too. It's, it's extremely difficult this time of the year to try to put that together, I think.
I mean, we've had them in the fall. I've been to fall retreats. I'm just throwing that out there right now for the sake of discussion, is that do we just look at, and we have a lot going on in the fall. The superintendent has a lot going on this summer. And her staff has a lot going on this summer, and we get the schools open, and then maybe we can have a retreat in the fall of the year, in September, October timeframe. It might be an opportunity for us to get our, be more flexible with our schedules.
I'm hearing, personally, July would be good for me, but I'm hearing that most people here have unfinished, unfinished business coming up in July and couldn't make a decision at this point. So my recommendation would be, let's-
Table it.
I don't, well, I don't see how we can, if you don't know your schedule, I don't see how we can schedule anything. So I would, I would table it until later.
Brenda, how do you feel about?
It's not her retreat.
No, I know, but she's got to be there. I'm just getting-
Well, but it's still our retreat.
I understand.
She's got to be there, so no offense to the superintendent.
But she could be headed to Meniscus.
It's our, our retreat.
Sorry, Brenda.
I'll just-
Well, how does the rest of the board feel about going into fall?
I think fall, schools started. We have two new buildings and another one underway. And another, well, actually, three buildings being bought back up. I don't know that that's something that the superintendent should have to be, deal with, planning, helping to plan a retreat for us, for things that we want her to possibly do during the school year or look at during the school year, and we've already started. At this point, I might say we may as well just forget it and start planning early next year for a retreat, unless there are absolutely topics or things that the superintendent wants to have some time with us for.
I think at some point, it would be good for the board to have a conversation around the advanced ed visit. And that perhaps there might be a Tuesday evening when there's not going to be any student matters. Then we could maybe meet at five o'clock, if we planned in advance, and had a couple of hours that we could at least talk about that, because you all will need to be very, very well informed about the kinds of things that the advanced ed visiting team will be looking for and asking you about. And so if we could do that, that would satisfy my need. And it could be in, you know, August, September, but it could, doesn't need to be wait, to wait until October, because the visit, I think, is like the first week in November, and by September, you need to have your hands around what's, what that's going to be like.
Mr. Iverson, what was your proposal July ninth? Was that your proposal?
Yeah, my proposal would be anytime in July.
Is that a conflict for anyone?
That's good for me.
July ninth?
Is it a conflict for you?
No, it's good.
We just fixed it.
Yes.
I don't have anything.
Big up.
Can we do five thirty that day or five o'clock that day? Five thirty? On the ninth, will that work, Brenda?
It works for me.
Dr. Graham, are you in town that day? Because you and Judy Borelsky are key to the information sharing part about the advanced ed.
Okay, sounds like July ninth. All right, go ahead and put July nine.
You want to set an ending time to it?
Uh, five thirty.
Starts at five and ends at five thirty?
And ends at nine, ends at nine thirty, ends at nine thirty?
That's my type of meeting.
Yeah, mine, too. Start at five, five thirty.
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
No pool for me, though.
Five thirty. We start at five thirty on the ninth. Board retreat.
Okay. So do we need motions to those effects, to that effect?
If you would make that motion, please.
Okay. Um, make a motion that we schedule a school board meeting for July the ninth at five thirty as a school board retreat.
Second.
School board retreat is the topic. Agenda's in development. I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that?
Did you say we would have an ending date or no?
Nine thirty?
When we get finished.
Nine o'clock. Or sooner.
Whatever.
All those in favor signify?
If we put an ending date on that, ending time on that, then I don't, someone's going to show up and say, where are we at? Okay.
But where are we going to be at? Here?
We'll have to investigate that.
We'll have to investigate it.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't set the date, location yet, but we have talked about the multiple. We've got a little bit of time to figure that out.
Sure.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, whoever retreats it. Any other items of unfinished business, board members? Any items of new business, board members?
Yes, I do. Kelly spoke to something that I thought was very poignant, and I guess she spoke in reference to something that Matt Gabriel had written. And I think we should take a look at that. And copy it, mimic it, or anyway, get on, get on board with, with what's going on with, with the going from tolerance to acceptance. So if we could, I'd like to see the draft of whatever it was that Matt had written.
Contact Craig.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll contact county manager.
Great, thank you. Is that, does-
I agree. I was going to bring it up, too, Joe. Yeah, thank you.
So that would be a change to policy, so we need to see it twice.
Sure.
What he was talking about was a letter that Matt and the board of supervisors approved regarding a Senate bill that's under consideration. Currently, I had our policy reviewed by Mr. King's office last year, and I don't believe that you can add the sexual orientation to our policy as it stands now, based on that conversation from last year. So my understanding about what Kelly said was that there is a movement to impact the federal guidance on that subject. Brad, is that, is that correct?
We can't add it to our policy?
With all respect, no, that's not correct. What I said when we talked about it is that there is not currently a requirement that the various groups that Kelly listed, and I presume are in the letter that I've not seen, there's nothing in federal law or state law that requires, they're not what is called a protected class. And this is a push to have them become a protected class under federal, I presume, and state law. So I think my advice to you at the time was that I'm not aware of other districts here that are currently doing that, and it would be a board decision if you moved in that direction. I, I suspect that there are some districts in Northern Virginia and maybe some other public bodies that have extended those rights, but they're not rights, for, for instance, you can't complain right now to the EEOC that you're being discriminated against. Our current policies regarding harassment, we do, if, if someone claims that they are being a- If, if someone claims that they are being, a student claims that he is being harassed, or an employee claims that he's being harassed, my legal advice to you has always been, you need to treat those as if they are sexual harassment, regardless of male, male, female, female, male, female. But the current state of the law is not, that those are among the folks that are considered a protected class.
Thank, thank you for the clarification. So, I think Kelly was speaking about a letter, though, about a Senate action to change the federal.
Okay, even, even if that's what she was speaking about, I believe what Mr. King has said, we can change our policy to reflect that. And if we need to add our voice to something higher up, we can do that also.
Yes, that's, that's exactly what I was thinking.
Mr. Ivors, to, to your motion, if that is something we want to do as a board, I think we, there's no sense in dragging our feet. And if we have to read the policy twice, then can we have something at our next board meeting that we can see, and then by the first meeting in August, we can move, if we so choose.
Yep.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
I'll work, I'll work with Mr. King to bring you a policy.
Thank you.
And the letter, I'll get a copy from Mr. Meadows.
Super.
Other items of new business for school board members?
I don't know if this is new or old, but as we're discussing the new school year, have we looked at a place, um, for independent secondary?
I will look for a place for independent secondary as soon as I have everybody else settled.
As soon as you have everybody else?
Settled.
Settled.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And part of that decision is tied up in the board's desire for future use of Old Christiansburg Middle School. So it's not just a simple, not just a simple, pick them up and move them.
I just don't want them to feel we're forgetting about them.
We're not.
Thank you.
Any other items of new business?
Yes, um, I think we need to set another board meeting to, uh, work on the superintendent's evaluation.
Correct.
So I'll make a motion that we do that on July the eighteenth at five thirty.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify, abstain aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries on the meeting on superintendent's evaluation. Any other items of new business? Announcements and information.
A huge thank you to the Montgomery County Education Foundation for the gathering this afternoon, where you presented grants, and to Joe and Connie Ivors for the wonderful food, but I thought it was a very special, really great gathering, and thank you all. Connie, Sarah, Joe, Guna, whole group, it was really very special. And, um, I also appreciated the Social Justice Committee meeting yesterday, and would love to have a report sometime to the board on what's going on.
Any other items of announcements and information?
Yeah, Mrs. Blackburn and Ms. Albritton, uh, attended a diversity on race summit in January, and there's been continuing work going on with that. And we felt that we needed to have another gathering of the community to continue the conversation and report back on the work that's being done. And there's been some very impressive work that's coming out of, of that. So on June the twenty-second, from nine to eleven-thirty at the Blacksburg Rec Center, we will be meeting again, won't be an all-day thing. Some nice refreshments and, um, a performance-
Tell them about it.
-to help folks understand visually about things we're talking about. If you can make it, please come out and join us.
Any other announcements or information? You see the next agenda prep for upcoming school board meetings? June the eighteenth is our next meeting, and with that, I ask a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All those in favor signify, abstain aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, board members, thank you, members of the audience.